Good evening, everyone. I will call the September meeting of the Oak Ridge City Council to order. We're glad that you all are here with us this evening. Our invocation will be led by our friend and former colleague, Mr. Tim Stallings, who also serves on our Oak Ridge Industrial Development Board. It's always good to see you, Tim.
Thank you.
And then our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mr. Brennan Gleason. And we all know certain members of his family. So Brennan, we're glad you're here. If everyone would please stand.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this evening. Thank you for this beautiful city. We thank you for just how you blessed the city over the many years, especially in the recent time with all this new economic development. We thank you for your hand to be upon this city. And Lord, we just pray for all of our city employees, especially our teachers and our first responders, our police force, law enforcement on this special occasion tonight. And always pray, also pray for protection for all of our children and our elderly people in this city. And always pray that you would continue to bless this city as you would guide the city leaders, the city manager, the mayor, the city council, and all the boards and commissions to help make wise decisions for this city. Lord, we pray for peace, not only here in our city but across the state and also in the United States and across America. Lord, we just be with us tonight in this special occasion and bless this meeting. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Brennan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I should have said, was looking at my notes to remind me. Brennan is an Oak Ridge High School senior. He's on the Youth Advisory Board and the Environmental Quality Advisory Board. So very active in the city. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tim Dotson.
Here.
Councilmember Gleason.
Here.
Mayor Gooch.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond. Councilmember Hensley. Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Thank you. And Councilman Hammond is at Oak Valley Baptist Church as they start their fall revival. So we'll be thinking about them and the success of their revival. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
Under proclamations and public recognitions, we have some police department recognitions.
Chief Hope, Chief Smith.
Thank you. We have two new awards that we're implementing in our department. And I think the best way to introduce those to you would be to read the proposal that was presented to us by Sergeant Kevin Craig. I'm just going to read it to you. Since the untimely passing of Lieutenant A. Marvell Moore and Sergeant Barry F. Bunch, I've been contemplating on how the department could honor their exemplary service. I would like to propose two new meritorious service awards named in their honor. Lieutenant Moore was known for his natural leadership qualities and presenting always as a quiet professional. Throughout his career in law enforcement, Sergeant Bunch had a love for training and preparing the next generation of law enforcement officers. Having said that, I'd like to propose the following meritorious service awards in their honor. First, Lieutenant A. Marvell Moore Leadership Award. This leadership award may be presented to a member of the department for exceptional leadership and dedication to the Oak Ridge Police Department and/or the city of Oak Ridge. Recognize for their ability to inspire, empower, and unite our team, their leadership creates a culture of collaboration and success. For recognizing and nurturing the potential of others, for setting the high standards and consistently demonstrating leadership through action. That would be any employee regardless of job title, regardless of whether they're a certified officer or not. The second is Sergeant Barry F. Bunch Department Instructor Award. The Instructor Award may be presented to a department instructor who displays unwavering dedication to the training and development of our officers. Their commitment to excellence in law enforcement education and their profound impact on the skills and knowledge of our officers for consistently delivering high-quality instruction that prepares our officers for the challenges they face. We actually have shuttle boxes we want to present to Marvell and Barry's families that we have. And I'd like to ask Kevin Craig to come up to assist me with that.
Absolutely.
Oh, right behind me. So sneaky, I didn't know you were there. So how do you want to do this, Kevin?
So, Councilman. This is the award presented to their family. Merit den, which will be given to whoever is awarded this additional award.
Exactly. So the first one is for...
Lieutenant Moore, right. So we'd like to ask Lieutenant Moore's family to come up, to be recognized.
Leadership award presented to you.
Thank you.
The second award is Sergeant Bunch Leader, Instructor Award. With these two new awards, Sergeant Craig also nominated two people for these awards. And we have been here tonight. I asked him if he would share the nominations with you. And let's present them to the councilman tonight.
All right, thank you.
Sergeant Craig? Councilman Gleason?
Lieutenant Hines, he embodies the definition of leadership. Team Lieutenant Hines leads and mentors in a manner to lift up every officer he works with and around. He too is a quiet professional. It does not seek recognition for his dedication in making the Oak Ridge Police Department better by investing in the future leadership found within the ranks of the department. Lieutenant Hines?
Sorry. Experienced as a field training officer and defensive tactics instructor. I would also like to recognize the hard work, planning and preparation he put into the Oak Ridge Police Department Gym Project, which he was able to work with Sergeant Bunch on. He did a great job on the project and it was a first for him on the scale of making a purchase like that, so.
Congratulate Cory.
Thank you.
Something we had not planned originally on doing tonight because when we were doing the council agenda, we didn't know we had these awards. But I want to also tell you about, I nominated Sergeant Craig as Officer of the Year to the Tennessee Association Chiefs of Police. I'd like to read part of that nomination to you. Kevin Craig is a sergeant in our Criminal Investigations Division. This past year, the Oak Ridge Police Department lost two key leaders to unexpected medical issues, Lieutenant Marvell Moore and Sergeant Barry Bunch. Not only was their loss an emotional shock to the department, it also left a large void in the department due to the many collateral and specialized responsibilities they carried. Several members of the department stepped forward to pick up the torches to carry on. And at the forefront was Sergeant Craig. When Sergeant Barry Bunch became ill, Sergeant Craig stepped in to assist with supervising the field training program. He has since assumed full responsibility as the field training supervisor, selecting, training, leading our field training officers, realizing Sergeant Bunch's vision for establishing and maintaining a professional program. He took on Lieutenant Moore's responsibilities for recruiting, mentoring new members, and coordinating community engagement. In addition to seeking innovative ways to recruit new members, he has taken over responsibility for panel interviews with police officer candidates. Sergeant Craig also carried on Lieutenant Moore's passion for community engagement. Some of the many community events in which he is involved include our Shop of the Hero event at Christmas time and the Back to School event. He works with area retailers to ensure that at-risk and underprivileged kids have access to school supplies as well as holiday meals and gifts. While not attending to his regular duties in the Criminal Investigations Division, Sergeant Craig regularly assists our school resource officers by supplementing staffing and interacting with schoolchildren. As a leader, mentor, supervisor, visionary, and as a humble servant, Sergeant Craig represents the best of the law enforcement profession. He is an advocate within the department as well as the community. He does not seek self-promotion and prefers to work... He works diligently to carry on the legacy of those who came before him to make ORPD a well-respected agency in the law enforcement community. Even if you never hear his name directly attached to it, for these reasons, it is my honor to present Detective Sergeant Kevin Craig that he received the Officer of the Year Award by the Tennessee Association Chiefs of Police. There it is, it's awarded, I'm just going to show you off. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm already moving on to the next one.
I'm going to ask you to stay up here with me. Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police gives away six awards a year. You just heard one of them. It is my honor to announce our chief as the Chief of the Year for the State of Tennessee this year as well. So congratulations. I want to... This, if you don't know, this makes him very uncomfortable. He does, he likes to recognize his folks and not be recognized. But I have to tell you a little bit about what this nomination says. He's a strong advocate for officer wellness and respected voice amongst his peers. I want to point out that he went to some training. Was that this year or last year? The fitness training.
Fitness instructor.
Fitness instructor training that a lot of young people drop out of. And he passed it. And he passed it with flying colors.
I passed. I passed.
I'll go on to say, it says here, "His calm demeanor and stoic presence are outstanding examples of leadership and care for his fellow law enforcement officers. He's quick with a heartfelt smile. He's full of positive encouragement." It says, "Chief Smith is the epitome of a chief of police in Tennessee and a member of the TACP." He has, like the rest of the department, undergone a lot of turmoil over the last year with the loss of a few valued leaders. But being the leader that he is, he faced that adversity and he did a great job. And I think the thing I'm most proud of, as I look around the back of the room, is the culture of this organization and what he's doing to shape that culture on a daily basis. So I just want to say thanks, chief.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to ask all of his department to come up here and stand and get in this picture. I know you weren't expecting that.
That's awesome.
I'd like to see everybody come up here and get right back here with us.
That's exciting.
Can you, are you able to get your mic, turn your mics on? Yeah, thanks. We're having technical problems up here, so we'll just do the best we can.
Remind him if it goes out.
So the next one is the recognition of City of Oak Ridge Fall 2025 interns.
I just want to help run the monitor.
Okay, Ms. Gray.
All right. Lauren Gray, Communication Specialist for the city. And we're here tonight to also honor our interns for the fall, recognize them. They, we have four this fall semester. Two of them are here. So I will call them up to introduce themselves and share their department. A little plug for our upcoming semester. We will be putting out the application this week for our spring semester. Their semester will end in November and we'll be hiring through the end of October for the spring semester. And then we'll get them started in January. So I will let them introduce themselves.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Rory Everie with Lauren in the Communications Department.
Hello, my name is Lana and I'm interning with Eric in the HR department.
Okay, good.
Sorry. There are two who cannot be in there here tonight. We have one, Caleb Ottinger, who's with our police department. And Lydia is also continuing her internship with communications this semester, but she is at school right now. So she's driving in once a week and putting in a full day.
All right. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate you. I have one item that I want to mention. It's a recognition, Mr. Chuck Hope, Councilman Hope, has been active for many years in the Energy Communities Alliance. For those of you who may not be familiar with that organization, it is the organization that represents every city and community in the country that is part of the Department of Energy's departments and has DOE facilities in their communities. And later this month, he will be elected as Chair of ECA, which is well deserved and certainly a great honor, not only for Chuck and his service, but also the fact, the way it reflects from his leadership and participation in ECA on our city. So Chuck, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Congratulations.
All right, next item of business, Madam Clerk.
Next item is the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? There are none? It is passed unanimously. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
Second. Under public hearings and first reading of ordinances, we have an ordinance to amend ordinance number two titled "The Zoning Ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee." By amending the zoning map, which is made a part of the ordinance, by changing the zoning district of Anderson County Tax Map 099GG Group A, parcel 047.00, located at 624 West Outer Drive, containing approximately 0.27 acres from R2 Low Density Residential District in the Manhattan District overlay to B1 Neighborhood Business District. And the official public hearing will be held on second reading.
Second. Moved and seconded. Ms. Williams.
Good evening. I think that having that map is very helpful. So the property in question, 624 West Outer, it is near the intersection of West Outer Drive in Illinois, as you're driving north on Illinois towards Oliver Springs. So the property owner of the gas station there adjacent to 624 West Outer at the corner of Illinois and West Outer, that property owner also owns 624 West Outer and is requesting to rezone that property, which currently contains one house, to the B1 Neighborhood Business District to potentially expand with a new business or expand his existing business at the corner there. Both staff and the Planning Commission had a good bit of discussion about this rezoning request, wanting to make sure we took into consideration concerns about impact to the neighborhood, traffic, safety, all of those things. neighborhood, traffic, safety, all of those things, but ultimately, staff and Planning Commission, Planning Commission voted and staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request. A couple reasons. First, there were concerns brought up about site distance. We did have input from our engineering staff who did not feel that there were any site distance issues there. Second, the zoning district that we're looking at this evening is B1, which is a neighborhood commercial district specifically designed to be integrated within neighborhoods and only allows businesses which are intended to serve neighborhoods. There are limited restrictions there, for example, signs are more restrictive in that district than other commercial districts. And finally, if that property, if the house were demolished on that property and a commercial business was put there, it would be built to our current code, which would mean potentially safer entrances, it would require a vegetative buffer between 624 West Outer and the adjacent residential property. It would also mean the Planning Commission would review any site plan that went there. So again, Planning Commission and staff recommended approval of this rezoning request, and I can try to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Ms. Williams.
Just a quick one, sir.
Ms. Gleason.
I don't know, I don't know who won the button race. We don't have a big board. So you mentioned the buffer between 624 and 622, is there a notification to the, to the owner of 622?
Yes, we put signage on the property and we send letters to a 300-foot radius around the property.
Yes, I noted with interest that the applicant says that they would like to combine the two lots, and I presume then that access for the new, new development would not be solely from, from Outer Drive, it would be, there would be access from Illinois, because Outer Drive isn't as good a place to get into a business as, as Illinois, but I think that makes a lot of sense. So I, I just wanted to comment that I thought that was kind of important, that they work together. Thank you.
All right, I, I don't have any...
I know, amendments on their way, there's something going on, so we'll have to, we'll have to do roll call until I get my machine back.
All right, any other comments or, or questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none, the motion is to approve the ordinance on first reading, and we will do a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Dotson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Gooch.
Aye.
Councilmember Hensley.
Aye.
Councilmember Hope.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Six oh.
Six ayes, no nays, and the ordinance is approved on first reading. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number two titled "The Zoning Ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee," by amending the following sections, Article Two titled "Definitions" to update the definition of portable storage containers, Section 3.18 titled "Temporary Use Permits," subsection H titled "Portable Storage Container Regulations for the Purpose of Making Portable Storage Containers an Accessory Use in Non-Industrial Zones for a Defined Time Period and for Specific Circumstances with a Temporary Use Permit or Building Permit," and subsection C titled "Permitted Accessory Uses of Section 8.01 titled IND1 Industrial Districts," Section 8.02 titled IND2 Industrial Districts, and Section 8.03 titled IND3 Industrial Districts to Add Portable Storage Containers as an Accessory Use Without Time Restraint Provided Containers Are Screened from Adjacent and/or Abutting Residential Districts. And again, the official public hearing is on second reading.
Move for approval.
Sir.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Williams.
That was a long title, but what this item is, is a zoning ordinance text amendment related to storage containers, portable storage containers, maybe called Conex boxes, if I understand. So we already have a definition for this in our zoning ordinance, and we already allow them as a temporary use only, but that's not working particularly well for two reasons. First, storage containers are really, in recent years even more so, become very prominent, especially for industrial uses, they're just part of, part of doing business. And then second, the language is somewhat confusing, and we have quite a few situations that we don't particularly want to continue, such as using a trailer, tractor trailer bed, you know, sitting on flat tires in the yard as a storage building, businesses using portable storage containers for permanent storage in residences as well. So this ordinance will do a couple things. First, we've updated the definition of portable storage container, hopefully we have better language to specifically exclude tractor trailers. Second, it will allow storage containers by right as an accessory use in industrial districts, so all industrial districts can use containers, which currently, technically they cannot as a permanent accessory use, provided they are screened from residential uses if they are adjacent to residential uses. It will also clarify that in commercial districts and residential districts, storage containers are only permitted as a temporary use, but we're expanding the timeframe to 180 days that you can use it as a temporary use, and if you have an active building permit, you also can have storage containers on your site, because they're fairly common during a construction project. So this, what those, this will allow us to do is we're being more permissive in industrial districts, and that will allow us to do better code enforcement in commercial and residential districts. Just because we've had some comments, businesses still certainly are permitted to use storage sheds, other kinds of accessory buildings on their property if they need storage. It could just not be permanent if we're talking about storage containers or tractor trailers. And finally, the Planning Commission also had a good bit of discussion on this item. They made a few changes to what staff recommended, such as updating the definition to just, to remove the word metal, because there were concerns about some storage containers may be made of fiberglass, and then they also increased the requirement for screening in industrial districts when adjacent to residential properties, but the Planning Commission did recommend unanimously approval of the text amendment, and I can try to take any questions.
All right, comments or questions for Ms. Williams on this item? Ms. Smith?
Yeah, it seems like there are a number of businesses that are concerned about this, about this situation, the current rate, the current ordinance and, and the change. How much interaction has there been with the business community, Chamber of Commerce, and so forth to talk about this, this concept of, you know, we, I, I, well, I remember when we did the current ordinance, and it was basically focused on pods that people were getting for their, for their backyards, back when pods were kind of a new thing, but so, things have changed a lot, and we know that a lot of small businesses are using storage containers for various purposes. Has there been interaction, any kind of meetings and stuff?
So what we're trying to do right now, code enforcement wise, is when our code enforcement offers, officers do see existing containers or trailers that may be in violation, we've been asking businesses to get a temporary use permit for the existing structure, which doesn't have any cost, and then essentially allowing them that temporary use timeframe to come up with another alternative to the container or trailer. That's what's been going on so far, there's been no specific meetings with business owners.
How are, how are? This isn't working. How are other communities dealing with this situation? Do we have information on what other cities are doing with, with storage containers?
Yes, Travis, our, one of our new planners did look that up, I wish I had it in front of me. There's a variety, we looked at some of the other communities in the area, a lot of them are doing similar to what we are, either regulating them as a temporary use, some don't have any regulations at all, but I can certainly provide that to you all in advance of your next meeting as well.
Has there been any consideration to allowing storage containers in resident, in commercial property with the kind of screening that would be allowed for industry? Because it's kind of like the kind of, it could be the kind of screening that's used for a dumpster, for, for refuse collection. That seems like it, it might be, it might be attractive to businesses that are using these containers.
We did consider that, it, it's not in the ordinance now, but that was a consideration that with screening, it could be appropriate, but ultimately, we didn't include it.
And do we know how many? How many instances there are around town where this has become a challenge?
I don't have a number, but I imagine if you drove around and began noticing them, there might be more than you think.
Okay, and, and one thing that's omitted from this is semi-trailers, that they're, they're too big to be a portable storage container, but we know there's, there's a nonprofit in town that's using a semi-trailer to collect used clothing that can't be sold and get it recycled, and that's, and I think that's pretty popular in the community, and it's a, as, as a way to get rid of stuff, and also as, as, for the, for the nonprofit, it's a source of some revenue. Has there been discussion about that, how that sort of thing could be allowed or, or dealt with in the future?
Yes, I would say that was an interesting wrinkle for us, because certainly, when you have, you know, loading and unloading areas, that's not regulated by this, of course, trailers are allowed to come in and out, load and unload with businesses, and what we're trying to avoid is having a trailer used for permanent storage, and the situation that you've described was somewhere in between, but ultimately, in staff's opinion, as long as the trailer is being used for regular loading and unloading, it's appropriate and can continue to be used that way.
And one thing I was wondering about with something like that is whether there's some way to decorate, decorate a large trailer for, for a setting so that it becomes less likely to offend anyone. I, I don't, I've not heard of anyone being offended by this particular semi-trailer, but I can imagine that it might be appreciated if it were more attractive, but that's, but I guess nobody's looked into that yet, so, okay, thanks.
Any other questions or, Ms. Hensley, yes?
You know, talking about storage trailers, how long can they be there?
So under a temporary use permit, it would be permitted for a maximum of 180 days, and then the applicant could request one additional extension, so that would be almost a year.
I think there's one on Warehouse Road that's been there about 40 years.
I may know the one.
Right on the, right on the west end of Warehouse Road.
The comments?
One thing I wondered about in reading this ordinance was the statement about no human occupancy, because, you know, we know that with the mobile minis and stuff with a nice big door and stuff, it's a place that people might go in and, you know, get out of the rain or, or whatever, and I wondered what occupancy is defined as, whether it's, whether, whether use in conjunction with using it for, for storage activities would count as occupancy, or whether that really means somebody sleeping in it.
I would say simply use of storage would not count as occupancy.
Okay, yeah.
I can get you a better definition.
Okay. There's one use that I can imagine being appropriate is for sale, seasonal sales, as a open, an open outdoor display area for businesses that are allowed to do outdoor sales as a more, more secure way of doing those sales than if you do it on outdoor surfaces or in a tent or something, but...
And we do actually cover that in the temporary use permit as well, seasonal outdoor sales.
Okay, and it's worth noting, the, the 90, the 180 days is twice what's allowed now, so that's, that's probably an improvement for people who are trying to use these, so, so I'm, I'm kind of wondering how this is gonna work, so.
Were there, what, what, what comments did you have? Was, was there any people at the Planning Commission meeting?
Not, not to comment on this item, no.
Okay, all right. All right, other, any other comments or questions? The, the motion is to approve on, on first reading, this, this ordinance, so we're still, still doing a roll call, okay. Madam Clerk.
Sorry. Mayor Pro Tim Dotson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Gooch.
Aye.
Councilmember Hensley. Councilmember Hope.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Six oh.
Okay, six oh, and it is approved on first, first reading. Next month, there will be a, a public hearing related to it prior to a second reading. All right, next item of business, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend Title 13 titled "Property Maintenance Regulations," Chapter Two titled "Oak Ridge Property Maintenance Code" of the Code of Ordnances, City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee, by amending Section 13-202 titled "Amendments" to add additional amendments to the International Property Maintenance Code 2024 Edition.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Pestmire.
This one is, it's okay, they're companion items, actually, so your first one is the amendment to the city code related to the property maintenance provisions, and your second one will be the, the city code provisions related to the stormwater management. So for the property maintenance is the one that's before you first, and, and that is to address some of the issues that you have discussed at previous meetings. So in the memo, it outlines the, the three main points that this ordinance change is trying to address, and one is that is to clarify that the violations can be sent to the permit holder and their contractors and subcontractors, because that's not very clear within the property maintenance, and a lot of times, that might be the individual who is causing the circumstance that relates to the violation. The second item is to require corrective action on grading and erosion drainage violations to take place within 24 hours, so that there is a set timeframe for that action to be taken. And then the third one, while we were in that section, codes also asked that we add a provision in there about giving notice by posting the property, because we are still having some trouble with the mail being significantly delayed. So those are the three changes that we made.
All right, thank you. Questions? Ms. Smith?
Yeah, is, is five days long enough for posting on the property to, that five days appeared in this proposal, and I wondered where that, where that number came from.
It was a, it was a timeframe suggested by code enforcement, it, it could be any timeframe that, that you would recommend, it was just the timeframe that we put on there. If it is a property that is occupied, you know, you should ideally notice that posting the day it's posted. If you're out of town for the weekend or something, we would think that you would see it within the five days, or if someone's caring for your property on your behalf while you were gone.
Yeah, that's something I'd be interested in hearing some reaction from the community about the timeframe. I guess my light's, I couldn't see the light on, nothing changed on the screen, so, no, I'm, I'm, yeah. I've, I've turned it off.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to be sure. All right, any other, any other comments or, or questions? All right, seeing none, the motion is to approve this on first, first reading, obviously the public hearing will be held prior to second reading.
This one doesn't actually require a public hearing.
Does it require a public hearing?
Nope, it's a city code provision.
Okay.
This one's good.
Then it'll still have to be approved on second reading, so, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tim Dotson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Gooch.
Aye.
Councilmember Hensley. Councilmember Hope.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Six oh, six ayes, no nays.
Six oh, and it is approved on first reading. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend Title 14 titled "Zoning and Land Use Control," Chapter Five titled "Storm Water Management" of the Code of Ordnances, City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee, by amending Section 14-505 titled "Storm Water System Design, Construction, and Permanent Stormwater Management," and Section 14-506 titled "Permanent Stormwater Management, Operation, Maintenance, and Inspection," to clarify the sequencing of sediment control measures to ensure they are in place prior to clearing of large areas and to require continuous stabilization in locations where work is not active.
Move for approval.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Racker?
I'm gonna give this one to Tom.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as Tammy mentioned at the beginning, these are companion items, and so we have the property management code, and we have the stormwater management codes, we're doing these by two different ordinances, because they're two different sections of code. So essentially, you know, we have talked a lot about how we can make improvements to stormwater management and make sure that some of the things that happened this year do not happen in the future. So in the stormwater management code, we're proposing two changes at this point. The first is to clarify the sequencing of sediment control measures to ensure they are placed prior to clearing of large areas, and so specifically, we are planning on adding into the requirements for the stormwater management plan, some language that basically adds, "The work sequence shall be specified such that premature clearing of large areas and land does not occur prior to construction of temporary sediment basins or retention basin facilities or other facilities or structural BMPs necessary to prevent erosion during grading and construction." So essentially, we're requiring them to put the ponds or the sediment measures in place prior to doing significant clearing of the property, so that we can make sure that we have the ability to capture erosion coming off the site in, in, in appropriate facilities. The second one is, is just to, to change some language and to add a sentence that basically states that we will require, "Continued stabilization shall be maintained in locations where work is not active." We talked a lot about, you know, the 15 days that is required by the TDEC code, and we determined that it wasn't, wasn't in our best interest to change the, the time at this point, but we are going to do is make sure that, that the, the stabilization measures are put in place. put in place within those 15 days, and that they're continuously maintained through, through the project. So I think with those changes, we'll, we'll be in much better shape to, to deal with the issues that we saw this year. And we will also come back to you if we see that we need additional measures in order to, to, to receive the desired outcomes that we want.
Questions?
Yeah, I found an inconsistency, I think, in the, in the code. And I, and I'd like, I'd like to address it. The, there's in Section 14-506, there's a sentence added saying, "Continuous stabilization shall be maintained at locations where work is not active."
That's correct.
That's a straightforward sentence. But I moved down into the later part of that code, and it says that temporary stabilization measures are not required where construction activity on a portion of the site is temporarily ceased, and earth-diserving activities will be resumed within 15 days. And I think that is incompatible with the idea that we can start, that measures have to be maintained even when the work is not active. If it's suspended for 15 days, or it's going to be resumed within 15 days, there, there still should be a requirement for temporary stabilization measures to be maintained.
Yeah, and, and we certainly had conversations about that. You know, this is that exclusion that I kind of mentioned at the work session. And, you know, I think the goal here is to make sure that, that they are doing substantial earth-diserving activities. If, if they're going to be doing something, you know, within 15 days that is something significant, otherwise, we're going to require them to do the stabilization measures and keep them there continuously. So let's say that you were, were working on a sub, portion of the site, you were going to work with, on it in 15 days, you wouldn't be required to put the stabilization in place. But if you were going to be going longer than 15 days, we would require the stabilization. And then after that, we would require it to be put back immediately after you determined it. So that's what the continuous language is, is about, is it would be put back.
So it's related to continuous activity. But typically, if the site has been disturbed, and is it going to be disturbed some more, the, it's not, it's, it's going to be releasing sediment potentially during those 15 days. And the measures that, the measures that are required from, from what's been done so far should be maintained. And I got a sense in reading this that somebody could turn around and eliminate their temporary stabilization measures that are already in place. I just read it as implying something different than I think what was intended. And I'm not, I'm not sure about the legalities of the language, but I thought that, that saying continuous stabilization to be maintained where the areas, work is not active was a pretty clear statement. But then saying that temporary stabilization is not required if you're not working on it for a period of some days didn't seem to fit with that. So I'd, I'd like to make sure that the words are not incompatible.
Sure. Yeah, well, I think the best thing for us to do would be to take that away and look at it between meetings and come up with some language that is consistent, make sure that it be.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to have some guidance on that also.
Yeah, we can, we can look at a proposed amendment between now and second reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that for some clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kinsley.
I definitely want some clarification on that. Any, any other, any other comments or questions? The motion is to approve on first reading.
We're going to give it a go.
We're going to give it a go, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Doug, I cannot see you back there in the corner. So before we vote, uh.
Let me take it back.
Take it back.
There we go.
Ms. Cole Crazier.
Doug Cole Crazier, 103 Monticello Road. I want to personally thank the city staff and Mr. Pesimer here for taking more direct action on this. When I saw this, a $40 million site project, and this happened right here in town with basically the codes that we have in place, it left me feeling disappointed, I guess. So it's a chance that we can improve on our codes and help the developers understand this is not that expensive. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Has any, any other member of the audience wished to address counsel? Okay. No, the motion is to approve, and we're on the board. Six ayes, no nays, and it is approved on first reading. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee, Title 1, titled General Administration, Chapter 2, titled Miscellaneous, Section 1-201, titled Administrative Organization of the City, to delete the phrase Information Services Department and replace it with Information Technology Department, to change the name of the department from Information Services, IS, to Information Technology, IT.
Moving to approve. Moving seconded. Pesimer.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So this is a, a simple name change, similar to what we did for Personnel and Human Resources. But to change the name of the department from Information Services to Information Technology, Information Technology is a more modern term. It identifies what the core functions are that are going on in that department. It was something that staff requested, and we're trying to eliminate confusion inside and outside the organization, because we get a lot of calls into IT thinking that Information Services is something completely different than what it is. So this is pretty straightforward, but we recommend that you move this forward.
All right, questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to approve, and we're on the board. I six, no nays, and the ordinance is approved on first reading. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
We have final adoption of ordinances. We have an ordinance to amend the Comprehensive Plans Land Use Plan for Parcels 008.00, 009.00, 010.00, and 012.00. Anderson County Tax Map 105D Group A located on In Lane from B General Business to R Residential, and a public hearing is required.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved and seconded. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open. Second.
Seconded. All those in favor and capable saying aye?
Aye.
All right. The public hearing is open. Is there any member of the audience wishing to address counsel? Seeing none, I need a motion.
Move to close.
Motion to close. Moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are back on the item itself. Ms. Williams.
So both the items under final adoption of ordinances are about the same four pieces of property. This item is a land use map amendment. The second is a rezoning. Four parcels on In Lane, three contain existing multifamily dwellings. The fourth is vacant. The new owner wishes to build a new multifamily dwelling on that property but cannot under our current B2 zone. So the requests in front of you are first to change the land use map from business to residential. I can take any questions.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to approve on second reading, and we're on the board. Six ayes, no nays, and the ordinance is approved on second and final reading. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend, ordinance number two, titled The Zoning Ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee, by amending the zoning map, which is made a part of the ordinance, by changing the zoning district of four parcels located at 104, 105, 106, and 111 In Lane, Control Anderson County Control Map 105D Group A, Parcel 008, 009, 010, and 012, containing approximately 7.76 total acres from B2 General Business District to R4 High-Density Residential.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So I'm moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor and capable saying aye?
Aye.
And the public hearing is open. Is there anyone wishing to address counsel on this matter? Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Motion to close. Second.
Moving seconded. All those in favor and capable saying aye?
Aye.
All right, so Ms. Williams, we're back to you.
This is the rezoning request for the same four parcels. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to approve, and we're on the board. Six ayes, no nays, and it is adopted on second and final reading. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
Under resolutions, we have a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the city's public transportation program in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for fiscal year 2026.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Moore.
Good evening. I'm here to discuss the Critical Trips Grant. TDOT has issued our FY26 allocation letter for the Critical Trips Program. This program provides operating assistance for demand response transit. Oak Ridge Transit, operated by Ethers, is funded by this grant. The resolution under consideration will authorize the acceptance of these funds. Just a little bit of background, in FY25, we saw a funding shortfall due to increased trip volume. We submitted a request for additional funding to TDOT, and it was supported by our trip data and information about our funding shortfall. TDOT approved the request resulting in increased funding. So for FY26 allocation, the state funds would be $250,000, and our local match would be 62.5, for a total of $312,500. So that's an 80/20 match. And the match share would come out of the city's general fund. This is about a $100,000 increase from our previous funding. Any questions?
Questions or, or comments? Ms. Smith.
This is a comment. It's a pleasant surprise that we're getting an increase in the funding from the state. But, but this is, this is welcome, because we do have need that's greater than what we were funded for in the past. And, and I hope that we will, will be, I will expect we'll be seeing increased usage this year too, and I hope we'll continue to see a bit more money from state for that. But this is exciting news, and I appreciate whatever was done to make it happen. Yeah.
I was pointing to you. She's done a great job.
Yes. We appreciate that. Ms. Hensley.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to point out that we did get a very nice letter from Tom Burns, who's been much, much involved in this, saying that he really appreciated the city addressing the, the ethera issues and improving them.
And particularly complimenting staff on their hard work, so.
That's right.
Okay. The motion is to approve, and we're on the board. I six, no nays, and the resolution is approved. Next resolution, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with Jackson Thornton and Company, PC, Montgomery, Alabama, for a comprehensive water and wastewater cost of services study in an amount not to exceed $145,500.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moving seconded. Ms. Bates.
Hi, Counsel. We have, for your consideration, a resolution to approve the cost of service study for Jackson Thornton. We went through the RFQ process. It closed on July 1st. We had five different respondents of those. This was the top pick from every member on that five-member committee. It's going to be three rounds of studies. The first round will be completed in 2025. The second round will be completed in '27, which will allow us to reassess our needs at that time. The last round will be in 2029, which will allow us to get into a lot of the westward expansion that we're planning for, so it'll give us a good foundation from which to build. The $145,500 contract is on campus. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Comment, this was discussed by Budget and Finance Committee.
Yes.
Right.
Sorry.
Okay. All right, we're on the board. The motion is to approve. I six, no nays, and the resolution is approved. Next resolution, Ms. Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with Matrix Consulting Group, California, for a joint cost allocation study in an amount not to exceed $18,000.
Second.
Ms. Bates.
We are also looking at doing a joint cost allocation study. It's been many years since a study like this has been done. And basically, what that does is it takes all of the different services that we offer as a city and breaks them down, so that we know exactly what we're paying for water and waterworks, for electric, as well as for the general fund. We need that in order to be able to move forward and budget appropriately. And this study will also be completed in 2025 and presented to counsel in January of '26.
All right. Questions?
And that, that one came in considerably lower than I anticipated it, so that's why you're seeing it. So.
All right. Questions or comments? All right, the, the motion is to approve, and we're on the board. I six, no nays. Resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next resolution, Madam Clerk.
A resolution revoking Resolution 9-98-2014 and establishing a three-member Budget and Finance Committee with an updated charge as well as providing for the creation of an alternate member.
Move to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith.
That's. Well, the Budget Finance.
There you go.
Nissan. Budget Finance Committee discussed this a bit, and you, our interest was in large part to make sure that we had an arrangement for an alternate, so that we'd have.
Correct.
We'd have at least, we'd have a quorum for, for meetings when, when people had conflicts. But, but also, we learned from staff that there was an issue with the old ordinance that we've been operating under. So this will update, update the ordinance that authorizes the Budget and Finance Committee and gets rid of a couple of provisions that were in the last ordinance that no longer makes sense. And the city attorney can explain that better than I can.
Ms. Racker.
Sure. Sure. So it, it does, it does remove a couple provisions that were in the resolution last time that the Budget and Finance Committee was created, which has been quite a while ago, back in 2014. So, so this is just an update to clarify what your charge is, and to also, as Councilwoman Smith mentioned, to place an alternate so that we can have a, a quorum. It does remove some requirements for processes that the city no longer does. The city no longer does monthly activity reports. We used, all the departments used to do that back when I first started work here. We haven't done those in probably a decade, you know? Probably not too long after this went into place in here. And we no longer keep, you know, the city calendar in the same way that it had before, so there's no longer the need to have that language in there about access to the mayor's calendar. So those, those have been removed.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll make one. I fully support this. I think this is an excellent idea. It keeps, keeps the business moving, and, and the demands on everyone's time are growing. It's not, it's not getting less. So I, I think this will be very advantageous to the city. Ms. Hope.
All right, just real quick, as far as the alternate person, would that just be rotated through, or that, would you just appoint?
I think I will appoint.
You'd just appoint one of the other council members to be the alternate?
Yeah.
And would that rotate kind of like we do with our city managers' committee or our city attorneys' committee? Would that just rotate and alternate?
We could.
To have exposure to budget finance that we may not have otherwise?
That, yes, we can do that. You think?
You absolutely could do that. You could rotate membership of Budget and Finance. You could just rotate your alternate, however you.
Can, can we put that in the, do we have to put that in?
You do not, because it, it's a recommendation by the mayor, is how it's worded, and that's how it's been worded.
Okay.
So if that is a process that you want to implement, you can.
And that, that'll be, and that'll come before counsel in October?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, is that satisfactory with you?
You'll be making your appointment.
Your appointment in October.
All right, and then we can put in the language about it rotating.
You don't have to put that language in there. You can just, it can be a practice.
Okay, that's fine. Fine. All right.
Comment, comment.
Ms. Hensley.
Yeah. Regardless of who the alternate is, any, any council member can go to the Budget Finance. and Finance Committee meeting. That's, you know, how this kind of all got started.
But they can't vote.
Right.
That's the point, so.
Probably wouldn't want to.
Okay, all right. All right, the motion, the motion is to approve, and we're on the board. Six ayes, no nays, and the resolution is approved. Next resolution, Madam Clerk?
A resolution to accept the United States General Services Administration's offer to abrogate and release the airport use deed covenant and right of reversion on an approximate 105.61 acre parcel of city-owned land in Heritage Center Industrial Park, known as Airport Track A. Set offer for a purchase price of $1,900,000 and requiring an earnest money deposit of $10,000.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Heeman or Ms. Moore, are you going to take, take this?
If I may, this item does need a public hearing requirement per GSA, and we.
Oh, okay, fine. A motion to open public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
All right, is anyone in the, in the audience wishing to address council in public hearing? Left, right, right, left, none. Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're back.
Yeah, I'll ask Kendall to address this.
Okay.
I'm going to start with a little bit of background, much of which you're aware of, but for public purposes. I'm going to dive into it a little bit. So as you recall, the city received about 105 acres for, from the GSA with the deed restriction requiring it for use for a general aviation airport. This past January, we passed a resolution formally abandoning the site as proposed for the airport location. And in February, we adopted a resolution to repurpose the property for nuclear industry-related uses and directing that it be sold at or above fair market value. We notice, notified that FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, of our intent to discontinue the site for airport development. Discussions with the GSA led to an agreement to proceed with abrogation of the deed covenant and reversion interest. At GSA's direction, we had an appraisal conducted on the parcel, and they determined that fair market value was 1.9 million, which is approximately 18,000 per acre. On September 3rd, GSA formally extended the offer to abrogate, requiring public hearing, council resolution, and $10,000 in earnest money deposit. So city council is being asked to consider the resolution to accept GSA's offer to abrogate Airport Track A at the appraised value. This action is part of a broader effort to repurpose the property for nuclear industry development, and the process has involved many different agencies at the federal and state level. And while the progress has been made, some of the details remain pending, so we'll do our best to answer your questions tonight. But we have ongoing coordination with governmental partners. Funding for this, the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development has committed to fund the entire $1.9 million purchase price. The funding will enable the city then to convey the property to an incoming nuclear industry company. The timeline for this is, from the date of the offer, we have 60 days to accept it with resolution and the earnest money. We are able to extend that timeframe upon mutual agreement. We haven't discussed that yet. And if we were to accept it, we have an additional 60 days for closing. Any questions?
All right, so the timeline for council approving, unless it's extended, is 60 days.
That would put us right at November 2nd. Yes, sir.
November, November 2nd, okay. And we can, it is possible to ask for an extension if we find it necessary. Is that correct?
Yes, that's in the abrogation offer.
Right, okay. And that's spelled out in the, that's spelled out in the document itself?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And as it relates to the, as it relates to the commitment from the Tennessee Economic Community Development Department, what, what is the, what, what is the requirement on that?
The, the state came forward specifically on this project to offer this, for this project. We've had no other discussions with them, other than they supported this project and this offer.
And when you say this project, are you referring to Oaklo?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, questions by, questions by members or comments? Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I, I think this is something we need to do. We need to get control of that land, and we need to pay for it. But, but I have concern about the, whether this, whether accepting this is going to de facto cause us to accept the Oaklo project. Because I didn't get enough information about Oaklo to really know what they're planning to do. They learned a lot about the land that they want to use, but not so much from, from them about the technology that they're going to use. And, and they indicated that I could expect to hear from somebody with a technical background later to find out what their industrial plan is. But I don't know what they're proposing to do, and I don't know whether it's something that I feel is going to be good for the city. So I, I would support doing this, but I'm not, but I don't want to be in a position of saying that, okay, we'll, we'll go with that project based on what I know at the moment.
Mr. Dodson?
Yes, in conversations with representatives from Oaklo the other day, they feel, they would like to attend maybe a work session where they can give us a lot more detailed information, and we can have a give and take of information, meaning that we can ask specific questions should we need to. So I would suggest, and I know that's down on our agenda, but I would suggest maybe we reach out to them and ask if they could attend an upcoming work session to discuss their plans specifically, rather than generalities.
Other, other questions or, other questions or comments? I mean, I fully, I fully support that, that idea. And, and we can, I think it's of such import that we could do it, you know, on a date that's mutually agreeable between staff, council, and representatives of Oaklo. Is there any other, any other discussion about that? Ms. Heeman, I'll let you, I'll let, I'll let you address the suggestion.
I think that's an excellent idea, and we will certainly work with them to set that up.
Thank you.
Happy to do that.
Yeah. Ms. Hope?
Just clarification. So right now, Tennessee ECD is willing to propose the 1.9. Any other offer, or is that, if that, if we do not take that, is, as far as the abrogation goes, would that put us, would we have to be the one to come up with the 1.9 if we did not take it from the state?
We would, unless we postponed this abrogation.
Okay. So just, I just want to make sure we have clarity. So right now, we're using, it'd basically be the ECD money from the state that would handle that proposal versus us directly?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hensley?
Yeah, I guess my question is, since it's in Roan County, why is the city paying all of it?
Well, it's our airport property, and it's the only way that we can do it, because it is owned by us, and it's got the, the deed restriction on it. So, I mean, in essence, under the agreement related to Oaklo, what was proposed by the state, the state would be paying all of it, and we would not be paying any of it. But I think you're saying, if that did not happen, why would that cost not be shared with another party? And, you know, we've not talked about that, to be honest, yet. We can, but, you know, in my mind, I would try to, to run down the, the client that we have right now before we started that conversation. We've got a, a good client and a $1.8 billion project here, and I know that we don't have all the information that we need to make the, the decision. And I know that zoning is going to be part of that. And to be honest, that your next work session, that's one of the things that we wanted to talk about. We've, you've mentioned those FIR properties. There are several of those in the airport that we want to talk, talk about at the next, at the next work session. So I would suggest running.
So your suggestion is we would defer one month to another. So we would defer this for 30 days, hoping that, or expecting, rather, not hoping, but expecting that there will be a, a work session with Oaklo?
Yes, yes.
Is that agreeable with you, Ms. Smith?
I was going to ask how long we had to, how long we could wait on this, so.
Yeah, so we'll have, we'll, we'll have to keep moving, and then, you know, if, if there's still questions in 30 days, then we'll address whether or not we need to request an extension of the agreement with GSA. But hopefully, we'll get our questions answered. Okay. Mr. Colesier, you had a comment?
Colesier 103, Monticello Road. Here's a tidbit that may be somewhat helpful. The, the District One Engineering Office here in East Tennessee, TDOT, told me today they have, they're working on plans to realign Blair Road to accommodate this project, and they've earmarked $5 to $7 million to, to move the road. So there's activity going on as if the project is going forward. The word is that the haul road is going to get repositioned, too, but I'd ask what, how that was funded and what the projected cost, but I haven't heard. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then I move to defer this item for, until the next, until the October city council meeting. Unless, unless, moved and seconded, we can have, we can have discussion. Let me just say, if it, if it becomes necessary to have a special meeting on this, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
Keep the process moving.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Ms. Heeman? I just feel like, I just feel like we need to have more information.
Okay.
About the Oaklo project. And, and whatever, you know, whatever can be shared, not only with, with, with council, but with the development corporation, I think would be advantageous. And a question to comments, discussion. Mr. Dodson?
Yeah, I've just got a, a thank you. Kendall Moore, I really appreciate everything that you've done on this whole ride, from airport to reassigning the property to, or possibility of reassigning the property. You've done a great job with this, and we, we appreciate you and everything that you've put into this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion and second to defer this item until the October meeting. All those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? And it is deferred. All right, next item of business, Madam Clerk?
Next item is appearance of citizens.
Okay, citizens shall be permitted to address city council about matters that are not on the formal agenda. Any citizen wishing to do so shall raise your hand, proceed to the lectern, and after recognition, state your name and address and the purpose of your appearance before council. Comments shall generally be limited to three minutes and shall relate to matters of city business. It shall not generally result in formal response or action at the time of presentation, because in most cases, neither council nor staff will be prepared to respond effectively. However, I may answer the questions, direct the city manager to do so, or request the city manager to work with the citizen to effect resolution of the matter. Statements that are purely political in nature will not be allowed, such as campaign speeches or announcements of candidacy for office, nor will announcements of a civic or social event that is unrelated to city business. Is there any citizen wishing to take advantage of appearance of citizens? Seeing Doug?
Doug Colesier, 103, Monticello Road. As you recall, at the, at the work session in August, Danny Wilson showed various charts and discussion of the conferency plan. And one, one chart showed a draft of development on Three Bend. I went back to the 135 online entries on the conferency plan, although I didn't attend all 70 public outreach sessions. I'm not aware of any discussion about this, even in the small area, but it suddenly shows up in a presentation to council as a draft. I've provided you here with a, a map of Three Bend. It's probably, it's the most iconic natural landscape in our city. If you look at the shoreline of Eld Hill Lake, there are 41 distinct inlets along this, which amounts to roughly 20 miles of shoreline. I can assure you, any city in the US would be proud to have a landscape in, in their city limits as beautiful as this. If, if we reach the point where our city is so desperate for economic survival that we have to develop Three Bend, that is not a pleasant thought. As we finalize the comprehensive plan, I'm hoping we can continue to show this as open space, as Secretary Richardson designated when he came to Oak Ridge in, in June of 1999. You think of his responsibilities. He, he came to Oak Ridge, he saw this partial as access to the DOE mission, the DREC mission, not the research mission, and he designated this poster child, see this? This is a poster child example. Mr. Hensley, Councilman Hensley's son, he held it up, said, "This land is for you, kid. Hopefully, we can keep it for the next kids." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colesier. Can I respond? Quickly, see if there's anybody else.
Doug, I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more, and I appreciate your comments. And I've been, I've been pushing for, for something like a green belt overlay on the entire reservation, so we don't run into the same kind of problems that we ran into with the, with the windmill junkyard.
Thank you. Was there another member of the audience wishing to address council? Okay, seeing none. Next item of business, Madam Clerk?
We have no elections and appointments, so we would do announcements and scheduling. And I do have one announcement. Tomorrow night, just a reminder, the Board and Commission reception is at 5:30 at the Conference Center. And so just want to remind everybody of that and hope that you all will be able to attend.
Mr. Dodson?
I'm just, I'm waiting for the next item, sir.
Oh, okay. Anything else? Okay, next, Madam Clerk? Request for new business items? Mr. Dodson?
Yes, sir. So I have two requests. This is for our city manager. If we could get an update on Carbon Rivers code violations and any movement to rectify that situation, I'd appreciate that. And the second would be an update on the sound study concerning sound ordinances related to noble metals in the adjacent neighborhood. I wanted to see where we are with that, and if we had received the necessary equipment to do those sound studies.
Ms. Hensley?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Mr. Dodson completely on the sound studies for noble metals. But we received a letter from a fellow named Barry Vickers, and you don't need to answer this right now, but, you know, he talked about numerous fire deaths on La Salle Park and Milk Dickens, and I'm sure you saw that. I hope Parks and Rec are going to jump on that.
We, we did, and, and John is already working on that, and they've been particularly bad this year. this year. We've tried to stay out in front of them, and they're getting ready to make a pass on all those soccer fields and treat those again. Yes, sir.
They're actively working on it.
Yes, and I know for a fact the Oliver Springs Airport has a problem, and there is a dust you can put on the nest.
That's what they're using, but they're.
Yeah, it's pretty effective. The other thing, I had a question, was in the weekly report for information services, there was a comment in there about improving our digital signage services. What is that? Just out of curiosity. Who knows?
I'm going to have to defer on that one.
There, that guy knows. He's obviously the expert.
Yes, sir. Actually, it's part of the.
State your name.
Oh, I'm John James. I'm the IT director, I'm manager, I'm sorry. This is actually part of the courtroom construction, and what we're doing is we're adding three signage, three digital signage areas outside the courtroom, and all three of them will be able to have different signage on each one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And one other question. You know, we talked this evening about retention of detention basins and getting them in place, you know, when the construction starts. Do we have any ordinances that tell what, you know, how to avoid, like the one we got out there in front of Home Depot? I mean, we need to somehow specify how they're going to be landscaped in the future.
Yeah, I honestly don't know. We'll have to look at that, and I think what you're referring to is the fact that that's covered in a, in a, in a black fabric. We'll have to look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I would like to see some kind of landscaping in our detention and retention basins that are an improvement to the viewscape, not a detriment. Thanks.
All right, do we have some idea how much it's going to cost?
I think it's built into the courtroom renovation, and some of this is functional things. This is, if you're due in for court so that your name can be displayed, these are not just signs to be having signs, they are part of the court function, but they're involved in the budget.
We're just, we're just now adding it to the project? Is that what you're saying?
It, it is something that has been requested as we reviewed how the courtroom operates. It was a request, and it's.
And how long is this going to delay?
It's not. It's not going to delay any more than the existing construction.
Okay.
Sir, the purchase has been made, it's about $300. The service that does it is free, it's online, and for, what it is, is three completely different signages. One will probably be used by PD, be on the PD side. One will be used for announcements for you, and the other one will be announcements for court. All three of them can be controlled by the same online mechanism, and the total cost, as I said, is about $300.
Okay. I'm not so much worried about the cost as I am an additional delay in getting into the courtroom.
I have, I have already programmed all three, and they're ready to go.
Okay. And you coordinating that with the general contractor? You can tell I've got a little frustration. As others do. All right, any other questions? Thank you for that. Thank you.
I've got one more question, Mayor.
Jim?
Yeah, I've got one more question, and this was brought to my attention by a parent with regards to our crossing guards in the city of Oak Ridge. I think we have, if I'm not mistaken, four crossing guards. We're allocated maybe six, and some of the schools like not to do that, but I think we may be down one crossing guard at the time, at this time. I mean, I feel like this is a super important thing with regards to being proactive with the safety of our students in those areas, and I would like to, if we could, look at the pay structure and what that looks like in comparison to other school districts or other cities, municipalities, but also a critical area like this where just a little bit of money, if you will, would assist us in hiring somebody to address any vacancies in those positions and maybe even reward those who come to work. I currently think it's around $14 or $15 an hour, and for the safety of our students, I feel like, I would like to see maybe Budget and Finance look at this, or the Compensation Committee maybe give it a perusal as well, but I wanted to bring that to our attention. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. City manager's report.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that. Real quickly, maybe not so real quickly. Here we go. Okay. She's going to let me think that I actually did that with this, but we all know I didn't. I just wanted to point out Nuclear Science Week, and this is the National Nuclear Science Week, which we get to host this year, which is going to have a lot of information, tours of historic and sites and DOE facilities. But anyway, it's a week-long celebration of nuclear science, and it will be the 20th through the 24th. AMSI has taken the lead on this, and there will be additional information, more detailed information at the next report that I give. But a lot of this is online. If you want to go ahead and scan that, or we can send this additional information out to you. There is a week-long of activities already scheduled. Also, I wanted to just say one more time how fortunate we are to have two recognitions today from our police department, Sergeant Craig and Chief Smith, and just want to thank them for all the work that that department does. And one other thing I want to point out is, and I failed to mention this earlier, is that Captain John Kelly has also joined that board, where he'll represent the Oak Ridge Police Department as Chief Smith is rotated off.
Okay. Excellent.
Our city clerk has been invited to make a presentation in the American College of Parliamentary Lawyers on Parliamentary Procedure for Government Bodies Subject to Open Meeting Laws. So that's quite an honor. I don't know if you all know that Beth is a rock star in this area of parliamentary procedure. She really is. She's known across the country as a leader in this area, so I want to say thanks to her for her continued work. We are accepting internship program applications. We had a fantastic group this summer. We've got a smaller but really good group this fall that's doing some concentrated work, and we look forward to starting back up in the spring session. If you know of any young people that have interest in government, they can pick the departments that are the priorities for them, that they prefer to work in, and we're taking everything from, you know, all the way from high school students up to graduate students. So it varies widely. I mean, we do, they do produce a lot of good work, and I think I've shared some of that with you guys recently. Our animal shelter is offering a half-off adoption on cats. They're all $55 right now, and you can see the shelter hours there, and employees get a discount as well on adoption fees. The semi-annual bulk trash pickup starts Monday, October the 6th, and of course, Lauren will be getting a lot more information out on that. Leaf pickup starts on November 17th. We did have a noise alert, if you did not receive that on your city alerts today, as I did, for some blasting out on Bear Creek Road. So I want to thank Lauren and her staff for getting those out, because people do, when they hear those loud noises, wonder, and if you have that out ahead of time, it certainly makes things a lot better for our citizens. Oaklo, we did have that announcement this week. That is still coming before you for planning and zoning, just to make that clear. But that facility is a recycling of used nuclear fuel, so they would take TVA fuel, they've got an agreement, recycle that fuel for new use. It's something Councilman Hensley is very aware of, having actually programmed some of these type facilities, designed them in the past, but it is kind of a new frontier. It comes out of the efforts by the president to make this available for use where it has not been available in the past. Also, want to point out our Shift Thermal Project. If you've not seen that, there's a picture of it at the bottom right at the indoor pool, and that's our advanced thermal energy storage partnership with Shift, and we're excited about seeing them test their product here, and that is for peak overflow or peak need of cooling. It's a really interesting system. Our Parks and Rec has its 20th Annual Memory Magic Scrapbook Event coming up soon, Atomic Fall Fest. I hope you've got that on your calendar for the 26th and 27th. There's going to be a car show, concert, there's a whole lot of things going on with that. And of course, our 43rd Annual Halloween Event is October 24th, and the Christmas Parade, somebody asked me about that last week. When is the Christmas Parade? So we'll go ahead and get that out there, December the 13th at 6:00 P.M. We had our Tower 20 wet-down ceremony. The manager did run over the curb while driving the truck, and one of our fire department members was kind enough to bring a piece of that curb into my office as a mentor of my epic failure as a fire truck driver. So it did not damage the truck, I'd like to report, but it was a great ceremony. Oh, yeah, I see who that is there. We've got one person that looks like they're actually holding, and one supervisor in that picture. We did have a great time. We did have a great time with our exchange students from NACA, and it was a very meaningful time spent with them. It was really fun to watch them at the high school football game and wonder what they were wondering about, and Dr. Borchers told me that that was one of the highlights of their experience here, so really great to have them here. It was a good, good event. Finally, we've got some new city employees and some promotions. The new employees you can see there, I am not going to attempt to pronounce some of those names, but you can see who we've got coming along. And also, I think we've got a few promotions. Virginia Spence, Corey Brooks, William Childress, and Robert Riggs have all been promoted into new positions, working with us, so we're glad to see. That's one of the most important things that we do is to see our employees grow. I will tell you today that we are going to start an emerging leaders program at some point in the near future. I've got three of our really great leaders, Eric Alt, Robin Smith, and Julie Fortner are going to work on that program, and we're going to teach leadership, we're going to help folks learn more about the whole organization and how to grow in the organization here in the very near future. Okay, I think that's it, and I'll be happy to take questions.
Questions, questions for Mr. Teeman. Ms. Rackard?
I have no report, sir.
No report? You'll have opinions next month, but no report.
If you guys see, if you guys see Val this week, her birthday is Wednesday, so we'll wish her birthday, happy birthday now and all week. She'll be here all week, so happy birthday to Val, and thank you, thank you for all that you do for us.
All right, is there any other, any other business to come before council? Seeing none, we thank you again for your presence, attendance, and we're adjourned.